Everybody, I make it two o'clock, so we'll make a start. Welcome all to our March amenities committee meeting. I think we've pretty much got a full house other than Carla. Thank you all for coming. And welcome to Susie Dowling, who I think is testing all of the committees to see which one she wants to join. So be on best behaviour, everyone. But no, you're very welcome to to sit in and listen, Susie. And contribute if you have anything to contribute. Oh, got an extra one. Hello. So we'll start with seven eight three. Are there any declarations of any disclosable pecuniary interests, please? None? If anyone notes one during the meeting, do shout. Seven eight four, any apologies for absence? None. So we're only missing Carla, she might turn up late. We'll make a note of that. Seven eight five, minutes from our. My agenda says January, but I think it's actually the February meeting.
It is the February.
It is the February meeting. That's quite all right, we all missed it. The minutes are, however, February's minutes, so are you all content with the minutes, please?
Yep.
Thank you very much. And I'm gonna juggle the agenda around slightly and take action points and updates at the end of the agenda. Purely because so many of the actions are covered under the other agenda items. And so I'll take them at the end and we'll use it as a bit of a sort of checking process to make sure we've covered everything. So we'll take them at the end. Moving on to health and safety, seven eight seven, to receive feedback on any matters requiring the attention of the committee. Start with you, Alan, anything particularly on health and safety? No. Chris, anything you wanted to mention?
Yeah, I had a couple. I've been going about taking pictures of the mess that Circo have left after cutting the trees, because some of the places are in quite dangerous condition. Down by Heath Court, if you walk along the river, there's branches across the pavement. And when we fall, that's a Circo.
Okay.
That's concerning a bit. I know it's not our business.
No, are there any trees on our land that are noted as a concern, or is it just the Circo Breckland ones?
It's just the ones that have been cut down. I haven't seen anything else. They're damaging our trees.
Okay, cool, thank you. Noted. Anything, Stephen, from yourself on health and safety?
No.
Easy peasy. Moving on to town team and countryside officers' report. I feel a bit lost without Nick, because he normally gives us the highlight report and sort of street furniture. You can tell what excites me on the street furniture, but we'll do it the other way around today then, Stephen. Start with yourself, if that's okay, countryside officer.
So we've just been working on the common with the volunteers, so we've finished removing our course of room for this year. So the cut material then has been disposed of with small controlled bonfires. In total, we've sort of cleared a quarter of a hectare, which is a third of a football pitch. So when we start with the volunteers in October until the end of February, that's how much we've cleared. So it's been pretty good going. Also been doing our tree planting maintenance at Lunnery Lane and Barnham Cross Common. And there's the total there for the few quid of wages. The grazing, sheep are grazing both sides of the common at present. Castle Park, we should be okay to graze under the ED four prescription that the Rural Payments Agency have confirmed today, so we should be okay to move along with that. Tree Safety Works, Norfolk Trees have begun. And they're still ongoing, so hopefully it's being completed within the next two weeks. We had a meeting with Matt from Treeworks, who conducted the survey of all the Fetter Town Council trees and provided the work schedules for trees that require the attention. So having reviewed the role and contract, this has been extended for this year, twenty twenty two. The recent storms, few trees down, these have been cleaned up with a combination of Circo at Mill Lane, Nunnery Lane area, and ourselves have a fallen tree at Main Street. Graham and myself was able to attend to this and able to tidy and make good. The feather edging on the fence panel was slightly damaged when that come down. So there's just a picture on the left there. And also, there's a tree on the right from Barnham Camp. So I've been in contact with Hollington about clearing this. They are aware of it, so hopefully they will be able to clear it and there won't be too much damage done to that fence line there. The Fish Pass, unfortunately, Ellis has been in contact just this week to inform us that this project has been refused. Senior manager signed off due to the programmed overrun into the twenty two, twenty three year from the tender received. He also mentioned there is no fund allocators' project in the following year. And is very unlikely to receive funding beyond due to increasingly tight budget following spending review at the EA. So Tina and myself have a meeting scheduled for the seventh to discuss what the next plan of action could possibly be during regarding the Fish Pass.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions, please? Nope, quite happy. Got a couple from myself. Firstly, we've spoken in the past about the epicormic growth on the trees on Castle Street, and I'm very grateful to Stephen and Nick for liaising with ID Verdi to get well, must be about ten trees at least cut back. And as you drive up Castle Street, the view of Castle Hill and Castle Park has improved significantly as you drive up there. So I'm really pleased about that, so I'm very grateful. And there's a few trees, it appears, that are not part of the ID Verdi contract. There's one on the Melford Common side of Castle Street particularly, which is on the sort of edge of a junction there, and the few at the top near the car park. I'm not actually sure if they even are our trees or whether they're Breckland trees. But it would make sense to to get those tidied up as well. So if they are Brecklands, then I'm quite happy to have a chat with them about that. Just sort of finishing off. And the other thing is about tree guards for some of the trees. Particularly, I've noticed on St Barnabas and on Castle Park, where trees have not taken and essentially died. There are sort of quite a lot of loose tree guards, and obviously with the storms, a lot of them have been blown around, and I know you guys regularly pick them up. And somebody said to me recently, what should we do if we spot the tree guys blowing away? Because they can be reused presumably. So is there any sort of advice for people on where to take them, what to do with them? There was one in a row down Melford Common the other week. Should they bring them to the Carnegie? Should they?
Probably the best place would be up the yard at cemetery.
Five in my garage for you. Take them to me. No, well, I, you know, I can't, I hate them anyway, because I think they're ugly, but I mean, they serve a purpose, but when they're blowing around, and several of them have been shredded by the the mowers, so you know, shredded plastic's not good, but I will let people know that, because I am often asked by dog walkers where to take them. I'm gonna take Stuart first, Dennis, and then yourself. So Stuart, please.
Thanks, Jay. Just in terms of the growth, I have had some feedback to say that it is nice to be able to see through to the Castle Park. But it's also a safety issue as well, where cars are trying to pull out, if it can be managed. It's something that, you know, I think if we can put it on our schedule of jobs to do each year and maintain it rather than us.
And it is actually part of the ID Verdi contract, and there's dates in there specified when it must be done. And so it's more a case of remembering to to make sure they do it basically, but now that has been established, because it's still a relatively new contract.
Well, they do have time scales to adhere to, don't they? So, you know, within that time scale on this occasion. And then extra ones, we are meeting Steve from Breckland next week, so maybe.
Yeah, that'd be great if we could, because certainly the one on the junction there is particularly bad, is the biggest. Dennis, please.
Yeah, on on where we're losing trees from, you know, where they die off if they're not taking. And if you are replacing those.
They have been replaced in the past.
Yeah, oh, but we will get, and what's in the trees?
If they have been replaced and they do die again, it's probably best not to replace them again, because obviously they're not going to take.
And that will leave gaps in our hedges and stuff, won't it?
The ones we have sort of seen that have died, there've been a clump of them in a certain area. With only under trees, so the ones actually in line of hedgerows seem to be surviving. And there are only ones and twos, so when the hedgerow gets away, and then we can come back and gap up, so we can actually see clearly where.
And what's in the hedges approximately?
It varies in the areas. So just for example, Barnham Cross, they're pretty much all going well. Mill Lane, all going well, because out in the open, we've got some decent growing medium there, decent sunlight. Just the ones that have been sort of put under the tree canopies and they're the ones that are struggling really.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other questions on countryside? Nope. Are you taking us through Nick's report, or is she just all drawn to whizz through it?
Do you want to put Bruce?
Yep. I assume Nick's got a better offer today. I'm not sure where he is, but.
Yeah, he just passed his apologies over. He's taken some well-earned leave, I believe.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
I think it's still from Christmas.
On that, on that case, we'll let him off. Well, obviously, we had the report circulated. I know they've been doing some further work on street furniture, and there's been some conversations with Breckland about upgrading the size of the litter bins along the river corridor. Initially, Breckland said no to them funding the upgrade, even though they are their bins. And there's a meeting tomorrow of Breckland councillors for Fettford to talk about MTI funding. And it's on the list to potentially pay for the bins to be upgraded using MTI money. So we're quite quite excited about that, that it's not a dead duck, it's, you know, potential to be taken forward. They've completed all of the Heritage Trail roundals. And you've seen them around town. Funny enough, I was walking along the river last week and I saw some tourists, because I spoke to them, they weren't from Fettford, and they were reading one of the lecterns, which was really good to see that they are actually being used. Thomas Paine statue, I know that Nick's done some further work on that and awaiting the quotes. Which always takes a bit of time. And I know Nick's met with a couple of other companies about the flower beds, with a view to taking them over. And again, there is an agenda item tomorrow for some MTI money to potentially to be used to upgrade some of those flower beds. Public toilets. Just the thing I really wanted to pick out of there, I think it's at the bottom. So we discussed last month about local bus companies being given their own key essentially to access the toilets outside of the core hours, and that's been arranged. And the local bus companies are very happy with the outcome, and they'd like to thank the town council for their efforts in getting that in place. So really pleased about that. I think that's a a good outcome. And thanks to Nick and the team for sorting that out. Any questions on street furniture? Town team report. Dave, please.
Comment really, I met Jeanne, who some of you know, she was mayor probably over twenty years ago. And she doesn't, she's ninety four now, and she hasn't, and she's very bravely pushing her trolley up the up King Street. But she hasn't been out much over the pandemic, and she just said how pleased she was when she came around the corner and saw the golden statues. And she had no idea that had been done, and so it will be a surprise for her, a pleasant surprise. So just passing on her thanks for the work that's done on that.
Noted. Liver art, she's masterpiece. Thank you, Dave. Stuart, please.
It's not an agenda, but it is a town, I presume it's a town ticket. I'm just thinking about the winding up of Prince Peter's clock forever above the people saying, oh, you can't even get the time right in the town. And I know it used to be scheduled for a weekly wind-up. It seems to have dropped off the priority list. So in other words, we can minute that and ask Alan to put that on Nick's schedule. We did talk about, and Ros did obtain quotations for automating it, in the same way that the Guildford clock is automated. And that was of the magnitude of about two thousand pounds to do that. So that's obviously a down option, but in the short term, it would be nice if we could just wind the clock out once a week and take a little bit of earache away from me from the thing where you can't even get the times.
It's right twice a day. Thank you, Stuart. Anybody else, please? No, thank you. And before I move on from town team and countryside officers' report, I'm conscious that we've got Fettford River Group with us today, welcome. Is there anything particularly you wanted to comment on on the agenda? We don't have a public forum or public questions, but I know you are keen about the Fish Pass, so I suspect out of anything, that would be the one you wanted to comment on, but it's entirely up to you, you don't have to.
Yeah, we we just want to say, you know, maybe that this is probably a win-win for everybody, perhaps not everybody in the town. I'm aware Prince Peter's called in, but, you know, probably this is the best solution. I think particularly to say hello to Stephen. When we all began the long journey of the Fish Pass, it was after two years of really, really full-on drought, and there was no water. And it's a very different picture now, where we've had quite a lot of flooding and things like that. You know, just turning it around to be quite different. So, you know, perhaps this is the solution we're all looking for. It certainly saves everybody loads of money.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to seven eight nine, financial report update to receive the amenities financial report for the eleven months ended the twenty eighth of February. Anything to add, Alan, to what's on the report?
I think it's just, in terms of overall budgetary control, it has been quite a difficult year. There are significant variances up and down. And I think it's just to be conscious of that. For example, on the Christmas, there will be some money coming out of playparks reserve to balance off the playparks over expenditure. We made a decision on the Christmas lights that if there was a debt, you know, overall, the council had a deficit, we'd fund natural reserves. So it's quite difficult to really draw conclusions, but we have been trying to kind of adhere to the budget to the extent possible. And so we are deferring certain things, reaching things until next year. But overall, it's, you know, we're hoping that at a council level, the budget will be funded, but at the individual level, we just have to be very conscious of those under low spends.
Okay. Noted. Dave, please.
Just on the grants received line, we seem to have ten thousand pounds shortfall there. And there's a comment, something like a further grant will be received. I'm assuming that's just for this year, is it?
Just for this year, yes.
But also, we seem to have been expecting ten thousand pounds or more grants, and we actually got one, just wondered what the reason for the shortfall was there.
I think in previous years, we have, we've had a number of grants come in, we've had sections that wanted seven money that that's come in, and none of that has come in this year. So I'm not sure whether we still have to do an application for it, but we haven't received, we've only received money from HRF, because previously we've received money from HRF and Breckland Council. So it's just a matter of just trying to understand that.
So we have more news on that, or?
I will have to do this part before my close of the hearing.
Okay, any other comments? No. I mean, personally, I'd never like to see a big variance. However, there are three, as you mentioned, three unexpected areas of expenditure which have been long, you know, building up for a while, frankly, Christmas lights in particular. And playparks, I mean, the health and safety repairs to the playparks, you know, were absolutely crucial, so if there is going to be a variance, it's for a good reason, so I don't mind too much. And that's what I shall say if anyone asks me at full council. Thank you, noted. Moving on to seven nine zero, projects draft budget.
From an amenities perspective, we've just done this at an overall council level, we haven't done it by committee. And there's been no change from the document that was tabled at the last meeting. Might have been some clarification on some of the explanations. I think I duplicated some of the explanations, but that's all that that has happened there.
Yeah. So could you just confirm, because that's, I mean, the the draft projects budget is for the whole council, which ones particularly relate to amenities?
If you have a look at the open space reserves, so halfway down, you'll see that there's Nuns Bridges, there's Barnham Cross Car Park Phase Two, Sculpture Trail, and the Thomas Paine Plinth. I'm not too sure whether the NCC parish partnerships come out of that, or whether that's planning. And playpark renewal would come out of, that would be an amenities budget item. And you'll see we've set aside quite a bit of money, because we understand we're going to have to do some refurbishments there.
Lovely, thank you. Just so we're clear.
I have been accused of bias by giving amenities more than any other committee, but.
Because we do lots of work.
Just so I also have to defend myself at council.
No, that's why I wanted to check, because I think some of us were pleasantly surprised last month that there was more in the project pot than we thought. But as long as that's been confirmed now, that gives us a good basis to work to. And I can give you two updates on that. One, this, the MTI meeting tomorrow, the one of the proposals is to match fund the Sculpture Trail. Seeing as we've got ten thousand pounds set aside, there is a proposal to also have ten thousand pounds of MTI money, which would mean that we'd be able to deliver that, which I think is really encouraging. And the other thing about the NCC parish partnership, this is for the pathway along Nuns Bridges, so this current year's bid for the next financial year. That is being debated by Norfolk's cabinet on Monday, and our application is on the list recommended for approval. So again, should that be approved on Monday, as it probably will be, then that's all confirmed as well. That's a thirty thousand pound project on its own. Okay. Oh, sorry, Stuart.
Because obviously, given that the the Fish Pass issue is now up there running, as part of the path design, obviously that will have to be incorporated within there, but presumably, if we get the the money, we can give a detailed design and then debate.
Yeah. I would have hoped that the Fish Pass could be resolved and done before we worry too much about the pathways in the immediate area. But I don't think it's going to tally up that way, so we're gonna, we're gonna have to think about how it all works together. And the other thing we're gonna have to consider is the pipeline project, because we don't want to be putting a pathway in, and then they put loads of diggers over it to put the new electricity gate back. I'm being cynical now, but you do know what I mean, it's sort of, that's exactly where the path, the pipe is going to go. So we might want to put that particular pathway on the back burner. Even once the money's confirmed, just so we make sure that we're not duplicating work.
Can be resolved to a prison.
Yep, our members happy to note and approve the two finance documents that Alan's presented. Thank you very much. Seven nine one, update on front garden competition. You'll be aware that we updated and approved a sort of schedule, if you like, last year about this. So Chris and I were able to meet with Tina and Alan and Nick and Stephen and David on Monday, which was really encouraging. And the officers are now going to put the necessary in place to start promoting the front garden competition. And encouraging people to either self-nominate or nominate neighbours, and be clear on what the criteria is. I think I saw an email from Tina that went to everybody this week. Where councillors are encouraged to basically encourage residents in their area to to get involved. And there'll be some posters produced relatively quickly by the team at the Carnegie, so we can get that out and about. And then the awards ceremony will be in August, and the plan is to have it in King's House Gardens. And sort of do a sort of afternoon tea type arrangement for the finalists. So really pleased that that's going ahead. We need to find some sponsors to pay for the prizes. So there's some conversations going on. So if anybody knows anybody that might want to sponsor a particular category, then do let us know. But given the efforts we're making this year with the hanging baskets and the planters, particularly with our Jubilee theme, it's nice that we're able to introduce the front garden competition at the same time and make a really big effort this year. Does anyone have any questions on that?
Just there.
Sorry, yep.
There's a lesson that Tina's drafted for councillors, if you want sponsorship, it's just a process to do that. If you'd like, I'll leave them, I have some here, I'll hand them out at the end of the meeting. If you want electronic versions or more copies, please don't hesitate to contact us.
Brilliant, appreciate that. Is there any update, Alan, when we might have some posters? Is that next week, probably?
I have to, but I
That's fine.
I can't answer your question, sorry.
No, that's okay, but they're imminent. She's encouraging. Okay. Moving on to seven nine two, approve of small grants. We've got one application to review today, which has been through the assessment process. Anything you wanted to add on that one, Alan?
I know, there's just one minor compliance issue that we can follow up.
Yep. Is that the confirmation of signatories?
The constitution has been signed.
Okay.
That also just has to be done, and the confirmation of signatories, yeah.
Yeah. Any questions from members on the application? I mean, we have supported Fettford Music Project in the past, a very good local charity, they do a lot of good work. Dennis?
On that, if I read the form right, they said they've never had a grant from us in the past. And I'm certainly certain that they had a grant from us in the past. It said no on their form, if I read it right.
Yeah, I think it's within the last twelve months, because they're only allowed one grant every year.
Yeah.
And it's the same for everybody, but
Yeah.
I mean, they've certainly not had one in the Yeah.
Have you had a grant? I mean, I was fully supportive.
Yeah.
Thing, I just thought that's on there, that's a little bit of a bit here and there.
Is that right, Alan? Is that essentially what that question is asking, if they've ever had a grant?
It does actually ask that.
Have you ever had a grant?
Yeah.
And they said no, and I'm pretty certain I voted for and have a grant before. Sorry.
No, it's a good question, Dennis. I think I I interpret that as have you had a grant in the last twelve months? But we might need to amend that slightly, just to be clear. I mean, if we want to know if they've ever had a grant, that's useful, but in terms of eligibility, just because they've had one in the past once upon a time, I can't remember when it was, but you're right, it was years ago.
Yeah, it was years ago, and you voted for it.
Yeah, absolutely. Stuart.
I think that may have evolved from when we also wanted to know if they've had it before, so we could look in our records to see that we've got a constitution and we had all that, so we didn't have to duplicate all the the information. So I think that may have come from that, as a question before. So now you want to just reword it or understand why we need the in that way.
Yeah.
Phrase it in on the last three years or something, so that you know that you've got the documentation on hand, and then they don't have to provide it.
Yeah. Cool. Okay, can I have a proposer and a seconder to adopt this? Dennis' proposer? And Chris's seconding. All those in favour? Thank you very much, Kerry. While we're on small grants, Alan, are there any applications that you've received and are currently being processed?
There is one.
There is one.
I was hoping that there would be about three this month, but fortunately, people have looked at the criteria and have decided against submitting a grant.
Okay. Any particular aspect of the criteria that's put them off?
One was was really a sponsorship, it was to sponsor someone in a sport activity, so that was really it, it was an individual rather than a greater community project.
That's fine. Good, so, I mean, we're well within budget for small grants this year, and presumably from our April meeting will be the pot will be reset, as it were, and we can debate next year's applications. So I do encourage members, if you are aware of any voluntary community groups in Fettford, it's up to three hundred pounds. They have to have a bank account, they have to have a signed constitution. Other than that, what are the rules?
That's it.
That's pretty much it. So do do promote it, is what I'm saying.
If if by some miracle we don't spend it, I mean, it seems like we're not going to be able to spend it all, are we carrying that over to next year?
Alan tells me that at our April meeting, we can have a discussion about what underspends we carry forward. But I would counter that and say we are overspending in a number of areas. And we might need the money, but that's a decision for the committee to take in April. I asked the same question, Dennis. Good, thank you. Seven nine three, approval of event application to review an application for the wild swimming event.
This event is scheduled for the twenty first of August. It's a small-scale event, and that is not just open to the public, it's actually to help special needs children. They do them in small groups of six or seven, and they just do it over a day. They have provided the information. I need to sit down with Stephen just to clarify, but I thought if we could get a decision in principle, it would be forward. They don't need any other event, any other licensing for Breckland, for example, because it's not that type of event. So it's really just from a nine, Hoppers nine to Hoppers four, and it's small groups of children, special needs children, they have volunteers and everything else in there. Just give them a treat by doing the swim in the river.
Great. Members content that, sort of in principle, we agree with that, subject to the usual rules? Yep. Easy peasy.
They just asked that the by the car park be closed off and if they can control the grazing, that type of thing, and that's what I need to speak to Stephen.
Okay, so it's all joined up. I will say, it's, sort of, open water swimming's become really popular the last sort of twelve months. I see people regularly. My neighbour goes down pretty much every day to the room. So I'm gonna take us back to action points and updates now, before we move on to complaints and compliments. And I just want to, because our list is forever growing, and I just want to whizz through them. And if there are any that are complete, to take them off essentially, and to make sure the committee are content that we've dealt with them. So the first one there is to discover who owns land. Uh, so the first one there is to discover who owns land on where the Thomas Payne statue stands, that was, uh, Dennis raised that point. Um, I don't think Nick categorically has, um, confirmed that and is still looking into that, is that?
What he has managed to do is speak to Norfolk County Council and Breckland and confirm that they don't own it. It's whether it's owned by Stanleyforth or it's owned by the town council, that's the last bit of this kind of work.
Brilliant, well, uh, if it's not owned by Breckland or Norfolk, it's either Stanleyforth or town, or it will be Stanleyforth or town because we're the only other players.
Does that mean I can claim it now?
Yes, as long as you maintain it. Okay, well, we'll leave that one on there until, uh, hopefully next month, Nick can confirm categorically what the score is. The second one is to prepare a report for the press on the environmental benefit of grazing on Barnham Common and Castle Park. And the status is to be completed when grazing has been organised for Castle Park. Have we got a month in mind for that, Steve, because I'm, we're, we're getting closer now, now that we've got the, um, you know, the licence thingy confirmed.
Yeah, hopefully in March.
Okay, so if I put March and then when we review this in April, we'll be clear on where we're at with that. Thank you, uh, third, to quantify the costs for the renewal of the play areas and to prepare an annual funding plan. Uh, status is it's longer term project to coordinating with the finance officer, has been any progress on that one, Alan?
Not at the moment, I think the team have been focusing on getting those hu- uh, health and safety repairs done.
Yeah.
I think they've virtually done, and then we look at that as a second phase.
Okay. Fourth, to obtain a quotation for enhancing the Thomas Payne inscription panels, and we've touched upon that in the meeting and, um. Stuart, do you know if he's met with some contractors always?
He's, he's met with one, he's got some quote, um, conversations with two others, um, which is still away, so still ongoing.
Okay, that's fine, and then once those quotes have been obtained, you can use that information for the funding bid.
Yes.
Cool, next one, to take the grass cutting out of the Fethford Town Coun- Council contract. It says ASAP, where are we at with that one, bearing in mind we're in March?
Um, not too far over, I'll have to review all this information, because I think this was a organised part before I was, uh. Here, I believe, was it?
Yes, it was, it was.
Again, we're meeting with Steve next week, so we might be able to.
Okay.
Make some progress on that.
I'd be quite keen on that one in particular because I'm conscious that we did a big public consultation with about three hundred people taking part. And we arrived at a decision which was to amend the maintenance regime and the cutting essentially, of a number of areas. And I think the public would expect to see that acted upon, so, um. If we just completely stick to our current cutting regime this year, uh, I think people will be, you know, disappointed, so. Um, I think it's important we make some progress on that, particularly given it's been so mild and probably due a cut fairly soon. So if you could update next month, that'd be really useful. Uh, to obtain a quotation for a red, white and blue colour scheme for the town's planters, um. I know s- planters specific are going to be done within the existing contract, aren't they? So, could we remove that one?
I think Nick is still in the process of talking to I D Verdy and, um, I'm sure by next month he'll report on it and his own report on it should be complete.
Okay. Leave that one on, yeah. See, I'm keen to take them off, but Alan wants them still on, which is fine. To promote the small grant scheme on the council's social media platforms before March twenty two meeting, where we can definitely take that one off. Because I know you've done that.
We have done it.
And I've done a, a plug here today, so I think that's, uh, well covered for the time being. Next, to install the final roundalls. There you are, you can take that one off as well, Chris.
Thank you.
To update the finger pointing signage around the town centre to reflect changes. And the status of that is owned by Norfolk County Council, therefore we need permission, um. I have spoken to Jane James about that as county councillor for the town centre. Um, and between the two of us, we are going to speak to Norfolk County Council about that. What would be particularly useful and perhaps an agenda item for next month? Would be for us to have a conversation as a committee about what additional signs we would like to add. And then the flip side of that is which ones we want to take off, because certainly one of them referred to the art gallery at the Guildhall, um. So what other features in the town do we want added, these are the black, sort of cast iron signs. So we can, if you all give some thought to that and we can have a, a chat next month, um, no idea if county will pay for it, but we'll have the conversation.
In terms of that ownership, our county's saying they're owning it, because. When a lot of these were put in, it was very much, they may have provided the capital for it. But it was under the understanding the legacy would be dealt with by the town council, um. So my understanding was everything unfortunately landed on our lap after they initially paid for it. Which meant that they were in our, um, remit to do what we liked with. Um, but also the flip side is that the costs were there for us to pick up as well, um, so I think. My understanding is they're with us rather than, they may be on county land, but I think the signs themselves may be owned by us.
Um, the update that Nick gave either last month or the month before was that they were owned by county. Whether that's we've established that they've bought them and therefore assumed that they own them, um, or not, but that's worth clarifying that. I, I don't suspect they will want to pay to buy additional signs, frankly, so either way, we're going to end up doing it if we want it done. Dennis?
Yeah, on, on those, I mean, they're very useful for the county, but some of them are fairly mobile. In that they can be pushed around by, well, members of the public, let's say. And so I think we need to look into a way of fixing them in, in a position more permanent than they are.
I think Dennis, Nick has been working on that and the team, and they have secured the majority of those now. Um, albeit some may be pointing in a, a direction we didn't want to go, but I think they are fixed now, but, uh, I know Nick's keen to, to work with us on that, so. Following an audit of the posts, I think that's the time to then.
Yeah, no, so, they were pointing in all sorts of directions in the past, Dennis, it's a fair point. I like the one at the top of Castle Street that just has one, one sign pointing to Castle Hill, which is next door. Kind of redundant, but, um, uh, you know, if we want to make use of them, and actually it's important for people to be able to navigate around the town centre. So that is, uh, useful to, to explore, although we've spent all of our street furniture budget for this year, so we'll have to wait. Uh, next one, to prepare an inventory of all street furniture in the town. Um, it says to be completed over the next four months, but I'm not sure when the four months started.
It was actually six months.
Was it six months?
And we, we knock one month off every, every time we do the extra point.
Yeah, okay, uh. I mean, I know that's a longer term thing, but, um. In order to put the maintenance programme in place, we needed the inventory to work out. I mean, I'm more interested in the maintenance of the street furniture than I am of the inventory, but, you know, one leads to the other, but. Um, we'll leave that one as it is for the time being. Uh, to report back on the engagements with Breckland on bin enlargements along the river corridor. Uh, as mentioned, that will be discussed tomorrow and Nick can update us next month. To report back on the toilet cleaning contract review and the addressing of service deficiencies. Further review after two months, has that been covered, do you think, Alan, with the work that's happened over the last month, or is it best to still leave that on though?
I think it's best to leave it on there, um, um, because I think we're gonna have to put it on the agenda to come back to this committee, um, at some stage.
Okay. Uh, one at the bottom, to take over certain floors disposed from Breckland, cost to be provided to Breckland to inform of the work, again, that one's being discussed tomorrow. Uh, to obtain updates on the Fish Pass and whether the Environment Agency will complete the project this year. Status, in prog- in progress frequent interactions with the Environment Agency. I guess we leave that one on there, and your meeting, is it next week? So, um, we'll know more by next month, what the score is with that. Um, depending on the meeting next week, presumably we'll have a, a plan B if they'd be for the April meeting. Uh, to consider whether to take on maintenance of school plane, waiting for more information from English Heritage, this was the. Thing we debated last month, which the town clerk was leading on, uh, any further update on that?
No, we're still waiting for those costs.
Okay, and last, to request, to, to request Breckland to consider a limited grass cutting regime. To promote wildflower areas in the town, need to propose amenities approved grass cutting reduction. Well, we've exceeded and taken free on. Cool, everybody happy with those updates, I don't propose we'll go through them in that detail every month, but I think it is quite useful to.
Dave? I'm going to take three off, I might propose to put one on. The roundalls have been completed, but we did say that we're going to relaunch the heritage plan, so that, should that be an action plan?
Yeah, I think that's a fair comment, um, yes, so with a new action to relaunch the heritage trail.
Yeah, I know we were waiting for the.
Yeah. We are, um, Chris and I had a meeting in Deiram on Monday of the Breckland Area Museums Committee. And Oliver Bowner from the Ancient House was there, and he was talking about the exhibition at the museum this year, his Vi- his Vikings. Which feature on one of the lecterns, and I mentioned to him that we would love to relaunch the trail in partnership with them. And essentially use it as a way of, you know, pushing more people to the museum to look at the exhibition. And then equally, if they're coming to look at the exhibition, they might as well do the trail while they're here, uh, so I think there is a lot of opportunity there, so. Now that they're all in, um, I think, I did talk to the town clerk about this, and she suggested that Katie might be the best person to lead on that. Um, so if we add it as an action, then we can sort of set up a meeting between Oliver and Katie and see what needs to happen, um. The, the key thing is finding out if there's a map and, you know, maybe getting some of that reprinted if there is one floating around, um.
But the, the, you know, the majority of that is on the red heritage map.
Yeah.
That, um, George Information have.
Yeah.
Which would need a reprint.
Yeah.
So we need to make a decision about format, costing, financing, talking and leaving here about distribution. That, that makes a quick decision, uh, to be made, but also on the Viking aspect, there is not. The heritage trial, but there is also a Viking trail that the County Council did many years ago. And it's online, but I think that could be something to launch at the same time, even if it's just a, you know, three fold, um, thing. Because so many people don't realise the Viking heritage we have.
No.
And if all the work's been done, um, let's, let's see if we can do that, uh, and launch that when they launch their exhibition.
Okay, Dennis, please.
Uh, some of our maps that are in town are considerably outdated and giving false information. Especially if you look at the one on the Bell Hotel, there's some data on there that is no longer back to that. Who's, who, whose responsibility is that?
We are. We are, Stuart.
Yeah, he, uh, you know, you're speaking with a converted Dennis, I've been banging, banging on for years, you know, especially with the bus station moved.
Yeah.
Suddenly, they're all wrong, you know, if you want to, yeah. Um, I did raise it with Breckland to see if they would be willing to help, um, fund their thing, because all the frames are there. It's a matter of reprinting, uh, the, the, the inserts, but it's not a, you know, fifty quid job, you know, these things. But give them their credit, those have stood the test of time, they're having very graffiti resistant, vandal resistant. So, you know, our proposal would be we look to replace them, but obviously, you know, Terry's got a magic wand to, to bring these things to. To refinance it, but, you know, you're talking quite a lot of money for it, and we have a number of them.
Yeah.
Uh, the idea, you know, Tor's information is not in, in the wrong place as well, and the idea of putting stickers on there, you know, I've discussed it. It just doesn't look right and it, you know, detracts from the, um, I think, I think there is a big piece of work to do there, Dennis. Um, and to find a, a, a funding pot to do it, I'd hate to do away with them because they are well received and. You know, very useful to, you know, give people information when they are there, but is that something we can put down on as a, as a. An extra to, to do list?
We're taking away all your.
I think we need to look at the costs to communicate to, to ascertain where we go to fund it, but.
Nice one, we'll, we'll pop that there for a second, Dennis.
Just a, a quick comment, yeah, they, they are very helpful, I mean. Me being a busybody, I am, I pick up tourists and show them things and, and take them around, I love talking about Fethford, you may have noticed. And I, I do use them as, you know, to show people where to go, but then I have to explain, this is no correct and this is not correct anymore. So don't get rid of them, please, let's update.
No, that's fine, I think one of the reasons we need to do the inventory is because, um. We own so many different bits of street furniture, I don't think we're fully aware of just how many we own as a town council, so let's get the inventory done first. Um, uh, but with all of these things, actually the real cost is the design work and, you know, sort of working out what you need to put on and that. That, that's where the cost, the print is relatively cheap, um, but we'll put it down as a sort of future project. Um, let's focus, seeing as we've just spent, you know, over a thousand pounds putting the round, roundalls and the lecterns together. Let's get that trail launched first, um, and, you know, seeing as the, I think the Viking exhibition starts in June. So that gives us time to, to get on with that.
Yeah.
Um, and by which point we'll be completing the inventory and we can properly cost up what else we want to do. But, uh, you know, we've made some good progress for street furniture, but, um, we do own more than we think, frankly. So, Dave's suggestion was to add on, uh, relaunch the heritage trail, is that right, Dave?
Yeah.
So we're taking three off and put one on, Chris, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, anything else on action points and updates? No, as I say, I won't go through it every month like that, but I think every so often it's useful just to track progress and see where we're at, um. We are a busy committee and there's, you know, lots of different aspects, so try and keep on top of them all. Okay, uh, back to the agenda as was, seven nine four, compliments and complaints, anything to note?
I think so.
No. Um. Uh, other than the sort of informal compliment that Dave mentioned from Jean Hay, which is, uh, always appreciated. Seven nine five, correspondence, to note and discuss correspondence received. None. Seven nine six, committee officers update, to update any information since the agenda was released. Community engagement, to discuss and agree any consultation or media release required. Um, well, I'm assuming there will be a press release drafted about the front garden competition at some point, once we've got. The posters for that. Any other media releases or information people want shared?
You've mentioned the, um, grazing one, which is something that.
Yeah. Lovely. So at two forty seven, meeting closed, thank you all very much.